erect a fence which is four feet high and fifty percent open which the deer can jump through when they see. So if the deer cannot see your food, they cannot jump into your yard to protect your food. So now I need an answer from the council how I can protect my deer, uh, my food from the deer. I've been reduced to tears over my vegetables that the deer just destroyed.
I don't mean to make fun of you, but I live right off of Carlin. I live on Parkview. I had the same problem with you years ago, and you are allowed to put up deer fencing. It's fencing that's made, I don't know how or why, but it does keep the deer out. So like, it's like the, oh, yes, it's like the, you need something to wind it up, but it does work.
Okay, so I did that, and then of course we are having issues with the neighbors on the left side of us, Lisa and Casey. And they decided to call, um, I think they called Mr. Mr. Donahue. I hope I'm pronouncing his name right, and we got a citation for putting up deer netting. So, um, I'm not exactly sure now how to protect my food.
Okay, well, I'll have to look into that and see what happens because I know the ordinance does say deer fencing.
Well, just to, well, what they were proposing is to put fencing along, uh,
do I guess, uh,
I have food all over my property, all in the backside. I have it by the house. I have it just all over. I have it on the side when you walk through from the kitchen. I have it all over the space. And no, this doesn't have the picture. This is the picture of the deer eating my tomatoes. It doesn't have the picture. I have deer netting. I have teacups with the black mesh deer netting around. That's what I have. I'm going to use that to protect my food. So I don't know how else I want to take that food.
I don't think there's any, but let us look into it. I know the ordinance says deer fencing.
Yes, it is.
Certainly states deer fencing. We've had, well, we shouldn't argue here. We should take it into consideration. We will look into it. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. You should probably come to your own.
All right, thank you.
And we have one other resident, uh,
Yeah, that's, that's, Well, I'm a senior pastor of the Redeemed Church. I was born by Saint Nobert Cappy Church up on, I think it's around the, I'm very old. But you have, uh, right egg?
Yeah, fifteen one and eight.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm the pastor of the church. And, um, I've had issues with my neighbors. I seem to go into Cali, right? We came all the way from California. My, my wife is doing her PhD program, and we're pastors. You know, uh, we are friendly with everyone who come across, but it's just like, neighbor on, 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 on the left side and the lady right opposite us is like, we can't even greet. Every little thing we do is, take pictures of our houses, of our, our, take pictures while we're away. You know, which is really, it's kind of, I, I felt, I felt a little bit we're not safe. So I had to put on, uh, CCTV cameras all over the house just to make sure. You know, yeah, they had to go to the blind spots and take pictures of our, yeah. You know, and I don't know why, what we're doing about it, because we don't know all these harassment. I see it as harassment. I'm prepared to be police. I met him. I met one of the police officers here to report all these issues. We don't want to make trouble. They are peace-loving people. I'm a pastor.
There were a lot of trees we cut down to please them.
Yeah, I mean, when we just got to the property, I don't, I don't want to take too much of your time. There are all kinds of trees and bushes right in front of the house. We had to cut these things just to please our neighbors because it comes clear to us that if the former owner of the property, you know, left those things, left the trees and all that, it was like a pain to them. So I had to get some people to cut the trees and pay for it. It's just to make peace with them all. So these were the things. So I just said, let me just cover my line. Let me see what you guys can do. Thank you very much.
Well, I think, excuse me. I think we will, I think the director of planning is going to have the head enforcement officer off at your house.
Okay.
And available, we hope so. Have your phone number or something. Let him look that over, please, because just to say off the top of our heads, yes, there are ordinance about tarantula property, which can happen. Um, but for some reason, I know what it's like to have the heat like a man, I love it. And I just had the nasty, what is it, flowers? But the heat from us, we won't help. Excuse me, I was gonna ask you a lot. Mr. Gorgi always has met with the property owners. Perhaps talk, um, very hard with the property owner. So this is not something that is just happening, this is being online for a period of time.
Something that is, which is that,
Staff will follow up with them tomorrow.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So we're, we're, we're working out the best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate all your comments, and now will we launch the foreign part of the meeting, the bills and payroll? Please, Mr. President.
Ministry of Services, Mr. Howard.
That is in order.
Planning, that is, Mr. Powell.
That is in order.
Now, Public Works, Mr. Larr.
That, that is in order.
Recreation is, he's not here.
That's in order.
Thank you. Library, Mr. Zabrowski. Store Service Fund, Mr. Larr.
That is in order.
Sanitarist School Fund, Mr. Larr.
That also do.
Capital Projects Fund, Mr. Powell.
That's in order.
Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, Mr. Powell.
That's in order.
Ask for motion to approve bills and the bill list, uh, dated June twenty first, twenty twenty three. The general fund will win two hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Uh, under recreation, it says town of B, our G B social hall, it says breakfast with Santa, two thousand dollars. How will you collaborate on that? Is that something we just do six months ahead or?
No, this is for last year's. They, um, this, uh, this hour has been working, sending the correct papers. And they just sent out a three twenty five month ago list, which you made.
Okay, so is it about this?
This is from twenty twenty two, breakfast with Santa.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think in the middle of the page. Uh, so just to read it, it's the next motion to approve the general fund bills, total of two hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-three cents. From your store, the fund will win three thousand, five hundred and seventy-two, fifty cents. And the sanitarist school fund will win two hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and seventeen cents. From the capital projects fund, it will win twenty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents. From the local fiscal recovery fund, it will win six thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents.
Hmm, seconded.
It's removed and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Also ask for motion to approve, uh, checks, which can transfer, which is ratified, checks and transfers are ratified. The general fund totaling seven-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and one cent. And from the table fund, total of fifty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. For a grand total of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-nine cents.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Also ask for motion to approve table, the date of June sixteenth, twenty twenty three. The amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-eight cents.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Uh, will we go on the approval of the minutes?
Just got, uh, new limits, uh, due to the portion for the meeting, it's Tuesday seventh.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Mayor?
As Mr. President, the first study I have is animal control report committed on number three. Police department received a hundred animal complaints in March, May. Seventy-three were referred to South of Animal Control, which represents an eleven point two-one percent in system usage, and that's around the high. It's typically in the seventy-five to seventy. So that is high. Um, so the, in May, there were two reported accidents involving wildlife. Eleven animal complaints involving wildlife and four deer removal.
Mayor, can you speak up just to do some quizzes in the background?
Okay, speak up. Okay, I'm sorry. Um, I'll turn this over. In twenty twenty-two, animal control were moved, ninety deer from Whitehall, which represents a ten percent reduction from twenty twenty-one. Uh, where a hundred and eight were removed. Since two thousand and eleven, animal control has removed seven hundred and forty-nine deer from Whitehall. Which makes us number three in deer removal. Mount Lebanon is number one at nine twenty-two, and Bethel Park two at eight twenty-two. And these are bigger communities. Uh, suburban wildlife harvested twenty-two deer during the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three archery season. And no resident complaints related to the archery program are made to the police department. Suburban, uh, wildlife reported one incident hunters being harassed and discovered one illegal tree stand. That was reported to the game, uh, commission. Moving along, Officer Joseph Persicetti was selected to be a tactical operator with Chekhov. Critical incident response team. He'll begin training with the team in July. Uh, one of our, uh, police officers sustained a foot injury while assisting Brett Wood, police department with apprehending a wanted subject. This occurred on June twelfth, and, uh, his next doctor's appointment is scheduled for July sixth, twenty twenty-three. There's a, uh, update on a road and utility projects along Provo's and Wayman Corridors. The Columbia Gas contractor hopes to have Provo's Road open sometime during the week of July. First week of July. I want to see if everybody's listening. First week of July. Uh, Bendout plans to begin the Wayman Bridge replacement project on July the tenth. Wayman Road will be closed to all vehicles and electric projects between Red Dot Storage and Provo's Road through November twenty twenty. You won't be able to come off if you want to without vote. Uh, police training activities, uh, Chief Gregorik completed advanced incident command system training at the State Police Northwest Training Facility in Meadville, PA on June thirteenth and fourteenth. Sergeant Bowman, Investigator Newell, Juvenile Officer Smith, completed a latent fingerprint workshop at the Allegheny County Medical Resonance Office on June fourth. Uh, moving along, uh, the last meeting, I reported that at this meeting, there would be, uh, presentations of extraordinary eats award for, uh, the, uh, great things that were done over on Almond Drive, uh, with Whitehall residents. Uh, unfortunately, we're not going to be able to get that set up or happen, uh, post meeting in July. Uh, I mentioned at the last meeting, a, uh, residents of Teal Drive were considering a block party. And then I did receive the petition and did grant the block party between last meeting and now. So taking care of that. Uh, I also, uh, contacted the three, uh, public news stations, uh, the P X Academy, uh, K K A T V and the T A E. Informed them of the four public information officers. Whitehall gave them a, uh, cell phone number in the event that, uh, they can't reach someone. And also communicated, uh, we simply always contacted them. And lastly, uh, been communicating with residents regarding, I'm sorry that Bob, oh, we see it. Thank you. I'm glad you're here. Please, I want to, all right. So, um, I want to, I sent this to council, but I'm going to put it into the record. Uh, a resident, Whitehall resident, uh, contacted me with, uh, regarding some ideas for pool pricing when the pool opens. And suggestions are that there should be no charge on the first day of the opening of the Whitehall swimming pool. The thought was that, uh, Whitehall residents could come see the pool and decide whether they want to, uh, you know, get a pool pass or not. A second idea was Whitehall residents who purchased pool passes at other municipal pools in twenty twenty-three, uh, should be given reciprocity at the Whitehall swimming pool. Which is an interesting idea that if I purchased it in Brettwood or Baldwin, uh, you know, uh, could I be given credit for when, you know, Whitehall opens its pool. Third idea is pool passes are sold for cash and ten dollars for seniors and proportionate reduction, uh, for other levels of passes. And fourth idea is a new pool pass, so there should be a daily charge of one dollar for seniors and children and two dollars for adults. And finally, uh, a minimum of thirty minutes should be allowed for lap swimming, recording the one hour time periods of twelve to one, implied to, uh, back to sit. So, uh, in considerations, the council can give to those suggestions or, uh, and I think I shared this with you as well. Uh, and then Chuck Vargo, uh, could not, uh, attend the night's meeting. But he, uh, also wanted to communicate, uh, he wants to weigh in on the lap lines. He says, "When I attended the noon adult swims at Whitehall Pool, which I would do thirty or so times each summer, most of the lanes contain two-lap swimmers who swam the entire thirty minutes. Many of us would continue to, to do so past twelve-thirty as long as the crowd entering then did not preclude it. I believe that the proposed twenty-minute slots are too short for the serious swimmers. This is preferred, and it is how high point fit that the park handles lap rotations. If the twenty-minute periods were proposed to accommodate more folks within the proposed lap lane schedule, I would suggest that the times available for lap swimming be extended to accommodate more thirty-minute swim." So that's Chuck Vargo's, uh, suggestions, which leads to Bob Behr. I, I just want to understand the point. So this is, I think, uh, as I understand the point you were making is there's a difference between lap swimming and adult swim.
Well, you, you, you actually called, he called it adults lap swim. Adults are only allowed in the pool. Lot of people, lot of adults don't swim. You have them far going underwater. Lot of adults, they're elderly. They do a lot of pool exercises in there. And again, that was thirty minutes. If you didn't have to worry about nobody bothering you, get your exercise done, then who cares how many kids?
Okay, so you're suggesting that, and again, I'm, I'm just wanting to clarify, okay? I, I don't get a decision here, but I get the facility.
I'm glad you're bringing it up. I really am.
So I, and I, I just want to understand. So what you're suggesting is there should be an adult swim where only adults go into the Whitehall Pool and no, uh, minors go into the Whitehall Pool.
Which was here for, for ten years I've been coming here to stay now.
So you're, it was, uh, and,
For a half hour only.
Okay, for a half hour, and then, uh, children would sit on the side, do other things, other activities.
Children weren't allowed in.
Right, right. But they would not be in the pool. They would be doing, if they were at the pool, they would be doing.
They wouldn't let them in at that time. They wouldn't let them in.
And so you're, you're asking council to allow, uh, um, the pool to be completely devoid of any children for thirty minutes each day.
And now those communities are doing an hour.
Okay, all right, all right. I, I understand. I, I just wanted to understand, because I, you know, I've been talking about the lap swimming, which is different, right? Lap swimming is different than the, than the adult swim. And so I wanted to clarify that laps.
With the new lanes, it's different. Totally different, right?
Yeah, the, 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 allowing people to have certain times for lanes is not the same as what you're suggesting, which is the, the adult swim. That there'd be one half hour when just, uh, just adults are in the pool.
And what Walt was alluding to too, before, they used to have it every hour for fifteen minutes and sometimes a half hour. But people still did laps in there. So you, you let them have their lane, and adults would still be in that section of the pool, you know?
Okay, while the adult swim, they could still do laps, right?
Mayor, well, I'm just, okay, all right. I, I want to hear that from the pool people, not that I don't believe you, but I want to hear whatever he's talking about. Is he correct? Is he not correct?
Yes, Bob is correct. The only thing, the, from, uh, twelve to twelve-thirty was called adult lap swimming. So adults who didn't want to swim laps could come in and just walk around, which they did. And they, I don't know why they didn't swim laps, but they were allowed to walk around for a while, because it said lap swimming. So.
All right, well, let me ask, is, is the plan to have a, a half-hour adult swim where no, no children are in the pool? Is, is that the plan?
I don't think so.
The plan is, the plan is to have the, um, lap lane swimming from twelve, from twelve to one as well as five to six.
And then there will be an additional lane open at all times for those to do lap swimming for whatever they please in the active pool. But there is no plan currently to have any adult swim where the children will not be allowed to utilize the pool while adults will be utilizing the pool.
Why? Okay, um, all right. So, so Bob is asking that that be changed, right?
Well, go back to, we had it before. Why are we breaking something we don't have to?
Well, again, let's, so I, you know, I don't make this decision, but I did, I didn't think that the, the views should be, you know, clarified. So the views are clarified now from the council. All right, uh, I believe that's all I have now.
Uh, you can give it to me.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
The thing is on the agenda for your calls.
Oh, sorry. All right, uh, I didn't realize it was on private reports. So I'd like, it's on the agenda that I'd like, uh, authorization from council to, uh, pay for the registration fee for my office, uh, to translate to mayor's assistance.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, I, I go.
And work hard, because I have a lot.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, uh, I also, uh, would like to ask council to stay after, to talk about, uh, personnel. You can be the services, so we can have a brief, uh, session, how to discuss these, how we future. All right, that's all I have.
All the charments to our support.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a lot to announce.
I'm sure he does.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a couple of, uh, we were actually seeing, uh, this is all listed in my June sixteenth, uh, report to council. Um, under item, uh, for Overlook Park, uh, Mr. Mike Council, he, um, he has what the letter to per today. Um, so the public process will be starting, the advertising pool here, uh, next week on the fourth to ninth. And ultimately, a, a bid opening date could be August, uh, nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
On Overlook Park, I've been worried, worried, thinking about this. The bins came in much too high. We had to redefine, for those who weren't here at the last meeting, kind of redefine what we were going to do at the park this time. And we're going out for a, a set of bins that we hope will come back with the money that we have.
With revisions.
With revision, yes.
Reduction.
It doesn't mean that the, the bottom half of the steps aren't going to ever be repaired, or the baseball field's not going to be ever. That's our, that'll be the second phase. We're not forgetting about the rest of the park. I just wanted to make that clear, because I don't think it was made real clear at the moment.
Madam President, just a, a kind of a discussion with the rest of us all about getting maybe a plan, a little bit of a thing, say, if you plan to make a couple of little website and Facebook pages, help further explain how the doctor that you are, that's how it works.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the phasing on over. And we're also working on the five-year plan. Probably the next meeting will ask you to keep alert because sometime in September, we're going to ask you to come up and look at different plans for Snyder Park. And tell us which one you like, which one you don't like, what you do like. So keep, keep your ears open for a meeting in September. Sorry.
A little bit of dollars, because we have one point three million set aside to do that part.
To do overlook part.
And then the first meeting came in, they go to two million. One point eight trillion, one, the second one was one, one eight change.
Yeah.
So it's at least a half million we have aside. Mr. McGowan, I was going to have a button better. He will give you a recall between that whole bit. We only have a million and three worth of time for the same support money, so that's absolutely targeted.
Sorry, I'm under. Um, under item seven, uh, the pollution reduction plan, uh, just to let council know, we did receive contract documents, um, from, uh, Seaprompt Incorporated, uh, so they're getting a manager for execution. And we will be scheduling a, uh, pre-destruction meeting. Under item four, uh, do have a couple of action items under the pool. Um, as you can see, um, a lot of activity occurring on the pool. Um, numerous operations ongoing and occurring simultaneously, um, so they're working on to complete that. Um, good news, uh, weather holds out tomorrow with no rain. The liner will be complete in April and filling this to start it thereafter. So that's a good, that's a promise. Um, obviously, landscape is all yours. Fencing will be starting. Um, a lot of general cleanup and tightening things up. Um, but under, um,
I don't know if you can hear it.
You hear this?
I can, I can hear him, but I have an earring.
Can you hear, sir?
Well, that's questionable.
It's questionable for me as well.
My, my, my sight is fine, but my hearing is poor. But could we, Beck, tentatively, are we still on, uh, July the sixth to open the pool? Or are we, we on a new date now?
Um, the, the pool, the, the date is moving. It's, and I say it's moving, it's ongoing. Um, right now, the schedule we have, uh, they're showing the, um, liner, the liner that I just spoke of being completed next Tuesday or Wednesday. Whatever day the twenty eighth is. Uh, so that, that's actually, it's been moved up. We're going to complete it hopefully tomorrow with no rain. So it's, it's dynamic. Yes, and then once they're finished with the main pool, then we have to go to the waiting pool, the smaller pool, and start that line. But they're going to start filling immediately. Um, we still have to go through the, uh, final inspection process with the health department and so on, labor industry. So there's a lot of moving parts.
There's still cement work to be done.
So there, there is, there's some, uh, there are, there is some sidewalk that was removed, had to be removed and replaced. So, yeah, that's ongoing. There's, there's numerous items still out there, a lot of small items.
Well, if we can, if we can't make the July sixth date, how will we be notified what the new, the new date's going to be?
Yes, to be clear, July sixth is the date for, is the tentative construction completion date, not an opening date. Uh, but the council is going to discuss the pool items later this meeting, and then there is another meeting on July fifth, uh, where something could be announced. But if you stay tuned to our Facebook page, the borough website for information, we post things in the borough lobby. You're always welcome to call. We're stopping staff providing you with, you know, the most current information.
So Nella, um, Construction Company, uh, did submit their, uh, fourteenth, uh, pay application. Uh, we reviewed that. Um, this pay application, uh, contains the change order two, the base of blocking, and also change order number three for the, uh, additional home buyers. Um, the pay applications in order to, the recommended motion to approve pay application fourteen in the amount of four hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty cents for the Whitehall Pool Improvement Contract One. General Construction Development, Construction Company.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
And, uh, also, uh, Mayor Electrical Group Incorporated submitted their thirteenth pay application. Uh, it is in order. Uh, we recommend, uh, the recommended motion is to approve pay application thirteen in the amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents for the Whitehall Pool Improvement Contract Two. The electrical instructions, the Mayor Electrical Group Incorporated. So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Opposed, motion passes.
Uh, Madam President, I hope I got this even, if you have any questions, happy to take.
I don't have any questions, thank you, we're answering from the middle. If you can, as we call it, as we felt. Okay, we'll move on to our managers' report.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the first item of my report in regards to the place of organic, organic agreement, uh, the teachers to abide how returns on copies of the current CBA. Can I ask that council offer as a proper bonus to sign the contract?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Um, next up on my report is in regards to the emergency operations plan. That chief report recently completed by annual review of that plan is required by the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code. A resolution adopting the updated plan is now needed. I ask that council place this resolution on public display for two weeks before considering adoption in July fifteenth.
It's been moved and seconded, this is the emerg- an emergency within the community, it's not safety inside the building.
Correct.
Thank you. Um, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Uh, next item I've got to on the solar panel project, uh, P A Solar Center performed visibility study, uh, on potential sites for panels within the borough. I think you have a copy of their presentation and the, uh, financials. Uh, while the borough was initially interested in, uh, panels on the salt dome and the ground mound on the hillside on Borough Park Drive, uh, P A Solar Center also identified the groups that have been merta building and fire station number one as additional options for consideration. Their studies are included in that packet for your review. The cash flow analysis and financial metrics of each site, um, are also included there, and the net prices for the sites range from an estimated twenty-six thousand dollars to a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, uh, which equates to total savings rating of around nineteen thousand dollars to one hundred and eight thousand dollars. And those estimates are based on current electricity, uh, rates and usage and the included super values of the S C R E credits being sold back. So I'll continue updating you as that progresses, right now, they're working on a draft draft. Uh, another infrastructure update, uh, in regards to, um, excuse me, wiring for, uh, live streaming and the house chambers. Uh, after two walkthroughs, culinary quotes to a little over thirty-two thousand will be seen for wiring the hardware. Uh, this cost is including the additional computer software and server costs, which are still being investigated and coordinated between the police administration I T and the police department's I T. A final estimate is will be secured once the Comcast fiber is installed, which is slated for August, September, so you can finalize those numbers for the budgeting season, December, April, December, January.
Once again, this is gonna be a part of the twenty twenty-four budget.
Correct, I'll gather the numbers for the, the, um, meeting for the twenty-fourth. And I believe this, uh, this is a pretty good one earlier, the safety training that staff had initially, uh, coordinated with Officer Smith, um, had been canceled due to death in the state. So we are rescheduling that for August twenty-first, from eleven a.m. to one p m. Um, so the entire borough building will be closed for that time period while the library, a couple of works, the administrative staff, will see back the safety training. Uh, we'll close notice everywhere that the panel on the dance. Uh, also in regards to the library, the upper library lot will be closed for day day tomorrow, we should see a consult already, there's six lots along the sidewalk, um, will be regated as part of the sort of whole progress project. And then last but not least, uh, the historical society, Whitehall Historical Society was kind enough to invite me, um, to a field trip to New Jefferson Historical Society, storage room, uh, to take a look at how, um, how they store their items, what kind of space they're looking for their display items. They're about twenty years ahead of our historical society, um, but it was nice to see where our historical society hopes to be. So I'm working with them on securing some display space in the lobby, and after their sign auctions concluded, I think they're gonna contribute to some display case of, of some sort in the lot. So that's ongoing.
Hey, Courtney, you've got a great, uh, historical, uh, building over that belt mark as well.
Well, I am not, I don't like that name.
It's, it's an old school building, the Biden College, it's, it's first class.
Basically.
Thank you. That is all I have, Madam President.
Any questions with the manager? And we'll move on to committee reports, what would say?
Thank you.
Chief Bob reports on a motorist acting in the rear of car, one six, that's eight, one, the, 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 and he's estimated seven hundred dollars, and his second response to the repair cost, the work will be completed by the, uh, extension. Uh, unfortunately, that's the chief's brand car. Whole vehicle, uh, released.
Don't eat that monkey.
He did call, he, he, that's right.
I, I'll give the motorist credit, he could've got away with it, because I was pulling out of the lot, on my way back, I couldn't understand what was flacking on the windshield when it was just up.
Oh.
It's a good joke.
Okay, secondary, uh, the documentary about the two thousand and nineteen, uh, two thousand and nineteen F, an Elizabeth Reising film, which aired on June twenty-eighth, twenty ten o'clock, on the investigative discovery show, and all officers were on the city, and they were apparently homicideed, that was a feature. And for the following.
Yeah, Chief, that, that, explain to the public, the case and all, the mayor, what, what happened.
In two thousand and eighteen, a homicide occurred in, in the borough, Elizabeth, um, East, uh, Borough. Borough. Um, it turns out that Andy Van killed the resident, um, produced her body from the home, and discovered her in a landfill in the borough. We immediately started a missing persons case with the family, we've had contact with Andy Van, having tests and the assistance of, uh, surveillance cameras and G P S tracking. We were able to develop suspect, we worked the kind of detective, they were able to get the person, they were able to prove. I think it took almost three to six months before she was located, and she could be properly laid to rest with the family. And in these three years for the prosecution came about, he was found guilty, and incurred a, a statement.
So that's, those circumstances are gonna be on TV.
Yes.
Uh, June twenty eighth. June twenty eighth, discovery, discovery.
Investigation discovery, that all depends on what you're taking. The name of the program is On The Case With Clothes On.
On The Case With Clothes On. Watcher, and all of, like, all of.
That's all I have, that's all we see.
Any questions? Thank you. Um, move on to recreation, unfortunately, this vote is up here.
Okay, uh, just to answer some of the questions we, uh, we had, uh, yes, there are penalties in the contract, uh, for lap lanes, uh. What we have to do there, first, this is a branding pool, branding facilities, we've never been balanced before. So quite frankly, we need to have a little bit of patience as we get a grasp of operating the pool, seeing how it functions, see how the customers function, so let's have a little patience for these people. And we really appreciate if you weren't so brutal to our staff people and accosting them with verbiage that is not their decision, it's council's part, we're trying to do the right thing here, it's a six million dollar project, and I'm saying, my gosh, if you go up there and look, that thing is a gem, that's a diamond up there that this borough has. And to harass these people about these, these issues until we find out, these folks haven't even operated that pool yet, so they, they have no idea how things are gonna work and how it's gonna function. We need to get that squared away, a little bit of patience for that. The grasp part, well, we wanted a bigger pool, so we could accommodate a lap pool, children's pool, and children's activities in the bigger pool, that's why there's less harassment. And, uh, I'm sure that they'll come back to us and report back to us what needs to be changed, what needs to be worked on and improved, and what is working good. So, uh, we asked for a little bit of indulgence, and as with any contract, if you've ever had contractors at your house, things don't go always as they think. Hell, when they dug that pit up and took out the old pool, we found rock underneath there that took extra time and excavation to get out, and of course, it cost us some more money. But the, the issue is here, it's all of our pool, it's a gem for this borough, just like the library is, and to harass these people is just unprofessional and, and light, you know, so, we'll move on from that. Okay, we got a couple, uh, pool pricing things we can do, so what, what I'm gonna recommend to you is.
Could be others.
Exactly, I thought it was going to be.
Bob, who are you going to, next question?
Sure.
It's not the two that are here, anybody that's here that's harassing, okay, I don't want you to think, I don't want you to feel like you're, you're harassing.
Thank you.
You came to your, your council, uh, you know, public meeting, and you expressed your views, and that's your civic right, so Bob is not referring to anybody in this room.
Thank you.
You did this turn me thing right now.
Okay, yeah, I would like to do that now, since it's all right. So what we have is two, two, uh, pool pass applications, and what I'm recommending, because this, uh, we have a relationship with Baldwin Township, in fact, in the seventies, that, uh, they did the purchase of a new number of pool passes. So what we were recommending from the committee is that, uh, that the pool prices for the Baldwin Township residents would be at half price since for half a year. That's if we still open the first week of July, but anticipating, hopefully, we're trying to construction, because construction won't be done till July, what, sixth, yeah. So we're making a recommendation that the pool passes, uh, if the dates still hold, that we'll go ahead and charge fifty percent of the normal rates for Baldwin Township. Now, for the Whitehall residents, we were also going to do the fifty percent, but because of the uncertainty on our part and the residents' part, I would make a recommendation that, uh, you still have to apply for passes, that there would be no charge in this mission here, we're opening up, because we will have issues of operations and things like that. So we can still do pool passes, but for Whitehall residents, we need no charge for us this year, that's my recommendation of the committee's.
And mine.
Yes, so we can, we can do a motion to, uh, to do those things, if we, well, a discussion, I'll have the motions.
I just want to put a correction, not a motion. So it is a motion on the agenda to adopt and amend the pool pass fee structure, is that sufficient?
So is there, was there a proposed fee structure that we were proposing, or is it?
This is it.
Then that's, then we're, then we don't have to amend it, okay, but instead of, yeah.
So I'll make a motion that the pool pass application reseal for Baldwin Township be, uh, published at, at fifty percent rates in the moment. That's the first.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, pool pass applications for reseal for Whitehall Borough residents, there are prices listed here, but I'm, I'm making my motion that, uh, the residents of Whitehall will still have to go through the process of getting a pool pass, but that pass will be free of charge for this year and this year.
You mean, they have to come in, identification, they are Whitehall residents.
Well, that's what happens when you get free passes.
Yeah, I'll see a little.
So, yeah. That's the motion.
Well, in your motion, are you eliminating guest passes, or can a resident bring in, are we still going to charge basically five dollars a piece for a guest?
For guest passes.
We're gonna have to make anything.
Yeah. So, uh, so.
All right, so we could comment, so this is a great idea, because one of the things, um, you know, one of the problems is, since the date is moving, you know, what do you charge, right? So by making it no charge, you don't have to worry about when it opens up, and that's why I think it's a great thing for the residents, so, um.
Okay, so we'll make that exclude the best passes.
Okay, there's a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Uh, we did, we went through that already.
Yeah, you were the motion, you're just to adopt and amend the pool pass fee structure, so that's probably, that's enough to.
You can see, so.
Bob, if I could just have clarification, so, uh, all Whitehall residents are free, but they still have to apply for a pass, correct?
Correct, is that, is that, because that, that shows they're a resident here, because they did that verification through a pass.
Okay, I understand, no problem. So if someone who lives in Whitehall hasn't heard that, like, many people do not, comes up to the pool, but heard it's free, how do we handle that?
Um, pool passes, the, uh, seat orientation on Saturday, um, allows the residents to check the pass, so your staff will be able to check, verify their residence.
So even if they don't have a pass?
Correct.
I can still let them in?
Yes, they can go through that.
Because I thought Bob said you had to have a pass.
Well, there's processes there, that there's no fee.
I think what you're referring to is daily admission.
Correct.
So a Whitehall resident could still walk up, show proof of residency, the staff could check it, and they could be letting, you're referring to someone who has purchased a pass?
Correct.
That they don't have to show residency every time that one comes in.
I understand, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then we'll still, uh, I'll make the motion on the guest passes.
Second.
We have two motions, though, that, um, that we moved.
No, I, but, but, correct me if I'm wrong, yeah, uh, the first motion for Baldwin Township residents did, did pass. So the current motion, um, that Mr. McCann, which made this in regards to Whitehall Borough residents, um, having no fee to utilize this one, they could do so, have to provide for the residents. That is excluding guest passes, which will be a fifty, so a fifty percent.
Correct.
Okay.
That's moved.
But the guest passes carry on to the next year, or?
How about old ones for you?
So we get, we should get a bunch, you could be excited.
Kind of guest passes, so individuals that have guest passes would be old.
No, I'm talking about.
No, but just in general, we did not, we need to clarify that.
Yes, that's a good question, Bob, a very good question, because there are a lot of people every year who have those, paid for that, and have not used them.
Yeah.
And we always allow them to.
Oh, okay, they're using, they're using it.
So then is the motion still to sell guest passes at fifty percent?
But let's do just motion about passes and, and talk, make it a separate motion on guest passes.
Right.
Especially then to clarify.
Just to clarify things.
I think a motion is, we may, um, it's stating that Whitehall residents will be free of charge, and still be to provide residency.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, a pool pass.
Okay, that motion was made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And that's a guest pass.
Yes.
For fifty percent. But that's.
Well.
So, uh. No, he said ones that were left over from prior years.
But I think that they're.
No, but how?
No, I'm gonna stock up. Yeah, I mean, I think guest passes should be like fifty dollars. Yeah, I think they're bringing a guest in, ten dollars. Or five dollars, it's still on the.
It's cheap.
Five dollars.
Five, five dollars on Memorial, five dollars on Labor Day.
No need to stock up.
What's the difference, you know, what's the difference?
So let's make.
Guest passes at Memorial. That was your.
A rate of ten for fifty dollars.
Right. So.
They don't believe in the motion to.
Okay.
It's just to clarify.
Yeah, but it was, we kept it, the other.
And I think that is still a practice.
Still have a motion.
Yes.
So is that a motion on guest?
This could be this good question.
What's there?
Anyone in the universe?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. I think maybe he's reading that up.
Question, Madam President.
I don't know if it's ever been brought up, have you ever gave a discount to first responders, your military?
Yes.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay, because I, I've never heard of it.
I've happened to go back and go and see.
Because I, I would've probably used mine, I never, I never heard you had. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious, you know, you don't have to do that tonight, I'm just.
We're gonna have a discussion.
Well, this year, free is free.
Free's free, right.
We're gonna look this up, Bob, we're gonna look it up, we've got that one really.
Just, just curious.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much for handling all that.
All right, I'll still go by those.
Um.
While we're done with recreation, I'm gonna move on to the administrative services.
Wait, I'm waiting on those.
Oh, hang on, okay, I'm sorry, we're on a roll here, so.
I won't talk about the pool anymore. Alrighty, um, so the second concert in the park with Abi Avananza was held in front of Plaza on June sixteenth. The rain did hold off, um, there was a great pla- crowd, there was even a little girl from, um, the borough that got to sing with him, and the residents loved it. Uh, the next concert is July seventh, which is Novice, um, they are a fully Whitehall band, um, and then Hot Diggity Dog, River Taco, and Hot Bus TV there as well. Um, the Teddy Bear Picnic, that was, um, with the library, was a success, it was held at Frank Park. Um, Public Works painted the lines for another pickleball court at the basketball court, the court, or the tennis court is already being well received, and permit applications are already being, uh, accepted as well. Um, summer camp started on Monday and is going very well. Camp counselors have encountered several outside individuals attempting to utilize the parks, all the campers are on site. A reminder about the closed permit system was posted on the Recreation Facebook today, just as a reminder. Um, the seventy-fifth kickball tournament on Saturday, July twenty-third.
The seventy-fifth kickball tournament on Saturday, July twenty-third, at Union Park, will feature music, food, and drinks, raffles, and a fun pickle game for anybody that wants to participate. We also have a campout in the park, which is July twenty-ninth at Highland Park. Interested residents should register for a movie, Under the Stars. Snacks will be provided at night and a light breakfast in the morning. Then lastly, I've been collaborating with the library on some events for the fall, so those will be announced soon. Any questions?
I'd like to.
And I'd like, um, an idea that Stun came up when we were talking. And then. No, I'm talking about the building, not the old swimming pool. It's what pickleball.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I don't know.
Well, so Stun was. What's old?
That's my topic. Well, that bug, I, I.
Yeah, you were, she says, thanks. It's like.
A couple of very, very. Yeah, y'all definitely.
We need to.
That's something to support. It will be, I see, helps. Planning and zoning.
Admin.
Oh, admin, I'm sorry. I tried to sweep right over here.
Dominique. Okay, open course knowledge, sir. Mark is the only recently to do the four-day training course in the case, flood, playing concepts, run by Pima. Any feedback for that? Any certifications?
Not a certification. I mean, kind of very hopeful. It was a four-day course. Learned a lot, you really enjoyed it.
Okay, the residents at two oh one through two thirty-one, Shadow on Circle, sent a really kind of thanking words and Mr. Harris, who's supervisor, for quick response to a C theater on Brothers Road after more than. I understand. It's a nice long thank you letter. Something says that, but apparently the smell was obnoxious.
Yes, it was during that key week, and at the same time, every night, they, they really noticed that he very lunch, right? And she called us late in the day, bringing Eric over there. This is Friday, by the way. Got him there before the end of his workday, found the deer immediately, saying she didn't hear the issues.
Is there anything else under?
Yes, I saw that I have for I know.
Thank you. Now, do you want to do planning and zoning?
No.
Oh, I got to do this before.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm betting that on the fourteenth, the minister, Phil, is here to keep going through a motion that we're giving to that.
Yes, that staff request council consider a motion to add on two thousand and third twenty-three SLD oh four Grove Point Phase Two Third Amendment. The applicant requests approval for subdivision of Lot Twenty-Nine of the Grove Point Phase Two Residential Land Development, establish property lines along party halls and five townhouse units under construction. At last week's meeting, the planning commission recommended additional approval of this application, and that recommendation letter should be in your, about, attached to its memorandum dated June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Staff recommends council grant approval of the application subject to certain conditions. The applicant shall address all outstanding issues referenced in the Borough Engineer's Review Letter dated June fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, in a manner acceptable to the Borough Engineer. Any additional issues raised by the Borough Engineer shall be resolved to the satisfaction of the Borough Engineer. And the applicant shall address all outstanding issues referenced in Borough Director of Planning Zoning Code Enforcement Memorandum dated June ninth, twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty-three, in a manner acceptable to the Borough Director of Planning. Any additional issues raised by the Planning Director shall be resolved to the satisfaction of the Planning Director, and the applicant shall be to pay all professional review fees of the borough in connection with this application. And that is staff's recommendation for this application.
Do there, Scott?
Yeah.
Therefore, I'd like to make a motion to approve twenty twenty-three SLD S R four Grove Point Phase Two Third Amendment subdivision plan application two five two dash two six of Chelsea Drive, subject to the conditions in planning, director of planning and zoning and vote of course memorandum dated May eleventh, twenty twenty-three. So make that motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
That's all I got, man.
Okay. Move on to libraries, Stun?
All right. I clear the thirty-two slide pretty now. So it's first thing to start out. It's, yeah, it's me again. It's my one time a year. I'll be short and sweet. First thing, all of the campaigns, all of the initiatives and programming for the summer are already underway at the library. Obviously, you walk in and you see a bunch of books, but I really, then if you took a look at the calendar and how many programs are really offered through the library, you'd be very, very impressed. There's probably more programs than there are books if you take a look at those. All those are mostly full also, whether that's a steam class or meet a police officer, which we've done a number of times, worked with the fire department. We're, we're very appreciative of that. We also just finished the Friends of the Library Spring Campaign. The goal for this year was thirty-five thousand dollars. We got to May thirty-first, and we were unfortunately at thirty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars, so we missed it by thirty-six dollars. But the next day, we made it, and we are now over forty thousand dollars. We're ahead of goal. We also had an anonymous donor who is a citizen of Whitehall who contributed an additional five thousand dollars just for getting that goal. So we're, we're very appreciative of that, so we can continue what we're doing there. Hannah, already mentioned, there's some things in the works for fall, so I'll go ahead and check that off my list that I don't need to talk about. I should update that later. The other big thing that is coming up is Whitehall Reads. It's something that's been going on for quite some time now. It is a community reading project. Whitehall Public Library is a member of ACTL, which is part of Allegany County, but obviously there's a lot of work that's done here as well. So that is going to be a featured book. There's going to be a lot of programming around that book. This year, it is remarkably bright creatures. I know that you might be thinking it's named after me, but it's not. And so we're looking forward to that. We have the programming that's going to be starting soon. So there's a lot happening ahead of the library, a lot of good that has happened recently, obviously with the Friends. And I am the, the chair on behalf of the library that works directly with the Friends. They're really the ones that do the, do the heavy lifting, so I appreciate that. That's the update from the library source.
Hannah, that could be a, be a meeting for your February, February event.
And then we would really, we would have to, we'd have to open the bigger venue. We already sell out early. Now we're going to sell up really early.
Okay, the next on the agenda is Parks, and I think I've covered most of.
Of course.
I'm married. Skipping you to.
I've already heard. Thank you, Madam President. Public Works crews have been busy spusing up the Honor Roll Monument at Baptist Road. New concrete steps, sidewalks, records, to allow your better access to the monument River Rock. And then plans will be at a short. We have, we have an unusual group. They're all very talented in one thing or another, so they can do, they can build anything. They can paint anything, do anything. Public Works crews are, also started work on the encasing of the police department sign in front of the building in stone from the old swimming pool. That's in, if you look at the entrance to the borough building here, that beautiful stone monument, that's what, same thing. The stone came from the old swimming pool, and now they're using it, some of the more of it, put a monument across the street. Public Works were we renting a fillet machine tractor with a brush arm. You ever see them when you drive down a road? It's a tractor-like machine, and it's got this big arm, except they cut the gold saw down. Well, we got a lot of places that we never did, and we have to do that now because there's some bad stuff, like we're denying things. So we're going to cut it down, and then from then on, our group will be able to handle every weather. It's the first time it starts on that, the tennis court. To maintain around the burbs, we cut together, remove poison, and block. It's a big word. Remember our own property. We don't need a much. That's it.
So, any questions on Public Works? At Parks, I think, I said twice now, we've covered it. I'm doing new business. Anybody have any new business? I have one thing. I've been talking to Donna about the Shade Tree Commission, and I don't feel that I, it's one of weird talking. I'm giving her my opinion, not all of council's. So I printed out the only information I could find were the borough ordinance where we adopted the Shade Tree Commission. I, I, there's one on everyone's desk. I'd like you to take it home, read it, and see how you, what you think the Shade Tree Commission should be doing, and we'll give Donna a chance. I mean, I'm sure you've seen it. I just, so we're all on the same page about the Shade Tree Commission. And then I'd like to have a discussion about it the next week. So if you, that's why that piece of paper's on your desk, if you please take it home. Shade Tree Commission did come out of Economic Development South. I don't know if that. But it doesn't exist anymore. How that changes things, so just something I'm asking you to say. Anybody else have any new business to come up? Okay, go on, your motion for adjourn. But no vote, no. Secondary motion, just second for adjourn, all in favor, say aye.